I call the meeting in order. All the councilmen are present. There is the Open Meetings Act on the wall as it is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public. Tonight, we're going to start off with a proclamation for Community Action Month. Whereas Community Action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities, and whereas the Community Action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all American counties, and whereas Community Action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes, and whereas Community Action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas, and whereas Community Action delivers innovative services and support that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed, and whereas Community Action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard, and whereas the Community Action is celebrating 59 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. I therefore, now therefore I, Robert Morgan, Mayor of the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all Beatrice Community Action agencies. And we have a number of them with us today, and I'd like to present the plaque to them. Yep. That works. That works. Thank you for all you do. Now I am going to call Chief Hickman up to... Sorry about that. I'm going to turn it over to him for some commendations and recognition of law enforcement people.
Thank you, Mayor. So this past week, or about a week ago, we had an opportunity to recognize officers for outstanding work that they have done, and some dispatchers as well. I wish I could recognize that to everybody in the department, but these are some that we were able to pick out because I've really excelled and been nominated by their own peers as well for different awards. So if I could have Officer Timothy Price come up, please. Officer Price was selected by his peers to be Officer of the Year of the year 2022 for Beatrice Police Department. His shift dispatcher was short-staffed, and Officer Price handled far more calls than anyone else in the department last year. His supervisor recommended him for Officer of the Year, so congratulations to him. And then you'll see... Fred Domon, could you come up, please? Mr. Fred was nominated for Communications Officer of the Year this past year. Communications Officer Midman was instrumental in the Southeast Communication Center successfully gaining the state of Nebraska accreditation. This is the first center in the state to receive that accreditation. He received high praise from the state on his work there and setting the bar very high. He also spent countless hours last year training new dispatchers, so he is the Communications Officer of the Year. Ready, Mr. Fred? George Benson. On February 22nd, 2023, Communications Officer George Aaron, as he prefers, Benson, was off-duty shopping at meat lumber. Another customer collapsed and was unresponsive. Aaron has received life-saving training through his roles as Communications Officer. He stepped up, began administering CPR. He continued this until Sergeant Hinnig and the Beatrice Fire and Rescue arrived. Aaron's immediate action saved a life for the individual who ultimately came back to the PD. Few thanking for saving his life. So we have recognized Aaron Benson with the Mayor's Superior Service Award. Officer Nethbert was recognized with the Community Service Award. She spent countless hours over the past several years assisting with Beatrice area special events. She coordinates the police department's participation in events such as Torch Run, which we actually just left a little bit ago, basketball tournament, and other events such as that. And she does a fantastic job, really gives us the opportunity to participate in that event, so we recognized her with the Community Service Award. Wes Hinnig, sorry, Wes Hinnig, he is not here. He was recognized with an individual commendation in the same event as Aaron Benson, where he also assisted in dividing CPR to the subject in meat lumber. If I could have Captain Moss, Sergeant Ethan Jordan, Sergeant Jackery, Officer Tim Price, Officer Shane Maloney, Officer Zach Lomstein, Officer Ben Morrissey, Communications Officer Wilson Walton, and Communications Officer George Benson. On March 5th, 2023, there was a subject firing a firearm inside a Foil's RV park here in town. Patrol officer responded, as well as a special response team. They arrived on scene, set up a perimeter, were able to evacuate the surrounding trailers, get everyone out of harm's way. Officer Lomstein arrived on scene. He is a negotiator for the police department, and he was able to begin dialogue with the individual who was barricaded in his RV. He was able to convince the subject after quite some time to be able to come out and surrender to the special response team who was on the scene and provided a peaceful resolution to an extremely dangerous situation. Communications Officer Benson and Communications Officer Walton, they were instrumental in managing a complex multi-agency response in a fluid situation seamlessly. Their efforts were instrumental in the proper flow of information, which allowed the law enforcement to manage the scene safely. Everyone's effort, that might reflect well on themselves and also the city of Beatrice. Thank you. We also have one more that was recognized. It was Tracy Behr. She was recognized by the Creek Police Department for her work that she has done helping manage their computer systems and programs. And Chief Gary Young came up and presented her award as well. She is not here tonight, but...
We can take a photo real fast, guys? Ladies and gentlemen? Outside profile. Tonight, we're thankful to have Councilman Kerr back from a long illness, and he asked if he could just say a few words, and I think that's more than appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know, some of you might be aware that I had a little incident here about a month and a half ago, or a little episode, as my wife calls it. First of all, I want to thank the community. They were just... Their calls, their letters, their... It's tremendous. It's a family that we have here in our community. The doctors and nurses at BCH in Bryan, but most of all, our ambulance crew. They are professionals. They are tremendous. And when I got up there, I got to ask them once I had the little surgery over with. They are very well respected up in Lincoln and the surrounding areas, and we've got one of the finest ambulance crews, and I just think we should be very proud of those guys and gals down there, because they probably saved my life. So I want to thank them very much. Thank you, Mayor.
You're bad. Thank you. Glad to have you back.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll see you next month. It's early. All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be acted on by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the councilman, so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, replace and receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on files all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on May 1st, 2023, is on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $431,811.66. Item F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $79,110.04. Approval write-offs of ambulance bad debts. H, refer claim of Aaron Schoen to the city attorney and city insurance carrier for review and disposition. I, approval of special designated license for La Sagavana 505 for a food sale and dance event on June 2, 3, and 4, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. at La Sagavana 505, 415, Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Approval of special designated license for La Rail for a cornhole tournament event on June 10th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at La Rail at 212 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Approval of pay request number two for Meyer Construction Incorporated in the amount of $300,984.93 for the water main replacement project as part of the 2021 Water SRF project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of pay request number three to Judge Brothers Construction Company in the amount of $412,068.30 for the water transmission line project as part of the 2021 Water SRF projects, and change order number one increase in the amount of $54,055.30 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Award of the bid for the Beatrice Municipal Airport Roof Bids 2023 project to Schoen's Roofing in the amount of $807,602.50 as recommended by the Airport Advisory Board. Item N, resolution number 706 for reappointing Craig Zarbanicki to the Community Redevelopment Authority. O, resolution number 7065, executing the master agreement for professional services with Olson Incorporated to retain Olson's Incorporated for on-call services to aid the city in making improvements to the city water's distribution system as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Resolution number 7066, entering into a master agreement order with Olson Incorporated to update the city's hydraulic model of its water system as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Resolution number 7067, executing the administrative service agreement with allegiance and any and all other contracts, documents, exhibits, and memoranda necessary for the administration of the city's self-funded health employee health plan. And number R, resolution number 7068, granting the community players incorporated of Beatrice and their designated permission to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares, or merchandise upon the city property located in Charles Park as part of their ice cream social event on June 1, 2023, between 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. Anybody would like anything taken off the agenda at this time? Ted?
Item M, as in Mary.
Anything else?
Q, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. McLean?
I move the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of items M and Q be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second. Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero.
I move that item M listed on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Sorry, my job. My job.
Ted?
Yep. I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I just know there was a lot of discussion about this that I wasn't present for. I was just hoping Tobias could give us a Reader's Digest version of what it is before we vote on it.
Sure. Reader's Digest version is in June of last year. There was the hailstorm that came through town. Most people probably remember that incident that occurred. We had quite a bit of damage that was done out at the Beatrice Airport. The airport at that point had insurance. However, the insurance they had was not sufficient, so they ended up being penalized and did not receive enough insurance proceeds to repair everything out there. We've gone through a couple of different things. We end up issuing a bid for those roof repairs out there. We respond... We end up with three responses, those being J-Tech, Skyline, and Schoen's Roofing. We said in that bid that we would determine which projects we would do based upon the bids that came in, knowing we did not have enough insurance proceeds to do all the repairs, but we'd award all of the buildings that are going to be done to one party. When we got done with that, Schoen's Roofing had the low bid. Whether you looked at all the buildings, whether you looked at just the ones that we were looking to do, they end up at the low bid, and so the Airport Advisory Board has recommended that we go with Schoen's Roofing for approval.
Okay, so there's no buildings being taken down. Just everything at this point is being repaired?
Correct.
Okay. So where... Although, I guess it's not part of this discussion, and if it's not part of this discussion, just correct me, and you don't have to answer it, but we didn't have enough money to repair everything percentage-wise roughly? How much more do we have... How many percentage, what do we have to repair yet after this is done?
After this is done, the bid actually came in at a point where we could get everything completed.
Okay.
With Schoen's bid, with a couple of the other ones, we would not be able to do that, but with Schoen's bid, we are able to. There are a few buildings that may not get repaired just based upon the age, i.e., there's a windsock that we're not going to repair because it's out in the middle of the airfield and nobody sees it's cosmetic. There is a... Something where the jet fuel is at. It's part of the next grant project that should get done next year. We didn't see a reason to repair it and then replace the item a year from now, so that item we're not doing.
24 or 25?
Should be 24.
Okay.
And then there is one old quantity out there that's quite old, probably just should be demolished at some point just due to the age of it that we're not going to repair. There's some cosmetic things on that one.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Gary, then we'll go to Rich.
Ted, there was a $300,000 penalty we had because the airport authority had the buildings underinsured.
Okay. I don't... I guess I don't have a comment on that. I... You can't fix what's been done, but okay. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Toby, but weren't the other two bids well over a million dollars?
Yes.
And that the lowest bid on the one as to Schoen, there was a $400... Or a $400,000 gap between the two bids?
Yes, I've got the bid sheet here. I can...
That sends up a red flag to me. A little history. Years ago, and I think Ted will... We had two or three contractors that used to come in here and lowball. And we'd get about halfway through the... Through the project, and all of a sudden, we'd have six, seven, eight change orders in there. And we do... Are still doing change orders because of... Item L on the consent agenda was a change order, so we're still doing change orders. This is the red flag that I've got. If there's $400,000 discrepancy between all of them, are we going to have halfway through the... Through the process, change orders coming in that's going to take us right back up there or over? They used to... Like I said, it's just... Ted, you remember that too?
Yeah.
Rich? I was always a... Always very... Well, for lack of a different... I was not very happy with change orders in the past. So I don't know... I don't know what to think about this. It makes me uncomfortable. I guess I'm done.
Okay.
You don't have to vote for the change orders, Rich. I guess you could do that.
No, I think our stance would be that it would have to be some extenuating circumstance that would allow a change and a changeover. For instance, when we had to change order because, was it the pipe that couldn't get in?
Correct.
So on the Myers project downtown, it was something that they had ordered on time, but it didn't come in, and when it came in, did it come in at a higher price?
No, it just was delayed. That change order was for additional time. The change order that tonight that was mentioned...
So it really wasn't their fault, but it wasn't our fault either. And so I think... I think we have to be real prudent with change orders, that if it's not related to something that was unforeseen, that we don't have the... We don't accept the change order.
And I understand that, Bob, but you know, years ago, we got burned on them, and I'm just a little leery of change orders.
I get it. Any more discussion? All right. Gentlemen, your vote, please. Mine's off. All right. Dwayne, you're not... You don't have a vote registered.
No, I have a connection with Schoen's, you know, personal connection sold.
Flip that over to abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Yeah.
Better?
Well, you went one too far.
Okay.
There you go. That's good.
Okay.
That way, it's record that you voted, but you abstained because of a personal reason.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. All right. Okay. Item Q?
I move that item Q listed on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Terry?
I'm not sure I really have any problem with this at all. I just want... Would like some clarification, because we went through claims... I went through claims again, and there's like $189,000, $90,000 again for the city insurance that we pay for. And I went through their... I read through their scope of work, and two questions I have. One is, I'm presuming you're happy with them, or we wouldn't have them here in front of us, but do we have some kind of protection above our basic insurance plan? Do we have major medical or reinsurance, something, so we have something catastrophic happen?
Short answer is yes. To go into your explanation...
Maybe that's enough.
So allegiance is your third-party administrator. They're your TPA. So they're the ones who take everybody's doctor bills, review them, make sure they're accordance with practices and policies out there in the world, make sure they meet our particular contract, and then they approve payments on those, and then we just simply pay those claims when they come across.
Yeah, no, I understand. I knew all that. I know, I understand all that.
But yes, we do have reinsurance.
We do, and it's pretty good, I would presume.
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. Would this be the group if we were just wanting to know... Because we're putting a pretty good chunk of money into this pool for a purpose. Who tells us what amount of money we should have in there before we don't have to do this anymore?
Lockton would be the company we would go talk to. Lockton is our broker that we use for our health insurance.
Has that ever been done? Do we... Rather than just rattling off a number or something, have we ever really got a number from them?
We talk to Lockton every year about what we should budget for the upcoming year. They took a look at past claims. They look at... Take a look at future claims. They look at what their book of business kind of sees as an average going forward for increases. But yes, we have that conversation with them every year of what to budget.
Okay, and I don't expect you to rattle this off, but can you tell me how much they told us we should have and where we're about now?
We're at $1,800 per month per employees, what we budget for health insurance. Their recommendation has been right around that number. I have to go back and pull the thing to look at for sure.
I mean, in the... At a 10,000-foot level. I mean, they recommend we have this X amount of money in our fund, self-insurance fund, and we have X amount of money already set aside.
I believe we're sitting at about $2, $2.3 million in our health insurance fund at this point, and I have to go back and look through my notes to see what they've recommended.
I expect you to remember that, and I would have asked you beforehand. I just couldn't get to the agenda here, but I would like to know that.
Yep.
And they give it to us in writing?
Yes.
Okay.
Usually as part of their packet that we go through every ballish.
That's all I needed, Mayor.
Okay. And that 1,800 per employee includes family, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the only reason I was doing that was comparison when we left. When I left the college, 1,800 is probably pretty good.
Well, we're paying these guys $27.55 per employee per month, also to do the TPA work. So that's another 50 grand-ish.
Yeah, that's all part of that 1,800 that we put aside.
Okay.
And they only do it one year out?
This one, I think, is two.
Okay.
So they vary sometimes, but usually two, three is probably the long end.
Okay. We've had that conversation about a little more long-range planning from instead of working with crisis management. I just thought I'd like... I didn't... When you said one year, I thought it was... I thought it was more than that, and it needs to be more than that, so.
A third-party administrator is not a company you change one every three, four years. That's not unusual.
Okay. Yep, I'm good.
Anyone else? Your vote, please. And that passes eight, zero. Okay, move on to public hearing. We have a public hearing to consider the rezoning application of Robert Messing Jr. and Beth Van Winkle for lots 21 through 23, inclusive Block 4, Highland Park Edition, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, Gage County, partial number 01238000, to be rezoned from general commercial to single-family residential.
All right, so we have lots of moving parts tonight with Rob Messing and Andrew Hakey's property there, which is about, what, Athan Beaver, give or take. So Mr. Messing, if you look, there has a small portion that is currently zoned R2. That's where his house sits today. Later on tonight, you'll see a new plat come through. You'll see some vacations come through. You'll see some of those things, but what he's looking to do is extend his R2 a little farther to the south and rezone a couple more of those lots that exist today as being R2 and be part of his house. And then when the plat comes through, that becomes a different lot. So what you see tonight is just rezoning where his house sits today, a little further south, be R2 as well.
Any discussion from the public? Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:26 p.m.
Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes eight, zero. Move on to resolutions. Resolution number 7069, entering into an agreement for the purchase or sale of renewable energy certificates between the city and ACT Commodities Incorporated as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move the resolution number 7,069 be passed and adopted.
Second. Discussions.
Once again, these are renewable energy certificates that come to us from Cottonwood, the wind farm that we have a PPA on. Every so often, we get these, and then we sell them out into the market, and we usually go through ACT Commodities. Again, contacted us, looking to purchase some of our recs. Recommendations that we proceed with selling them to that company.
From the public. Okay. Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes eight, zero. Resolution number 7,070, executing the agreement amendment number one with the paternal order of police lodge number 84.
I move the resolution number 7,070 be passed and adopted.
Second. Move on to discussion.
So yeah, a bit of a background here. We do have a contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, FOP. It's a three-year contract. We're in the middle of that area there. What we had recently was we had five, I believe, five police officers who had submitted their letters of resignation, indicating they were leaving. When conducting some exit interviews with them, the reason was given was always additional money. What we saw was we're not seeing a lot of new people enter into that profession based upon kind of what you see nationally over the last couple of years, and so you see a big push to gain what are accredited officers already and having them become lateral hires at other locations. And so we took a look, and what has been done is to look to increase the wages for dispatchers, officers, and sergeants. And so it comes out to be about an average increase of about $5 for a dispatcher, about $7.50 for an officer and for a sergeant. This contract then would extend through September 30th of 2024 and takes the place of their cola raise, which generally occurs on October 1st, so that will not occur. It's been made as part of this early amendment to their contract.
Could have done it earlier when they were all here.
They did. Just saying. They had to go protect us.
They had guns on their hip, you know?
Rich?
Five of them gave their resignations when they found out that this possible raise. Did any of the five older resident... Decided to stay?
Not that I heard of. I think all of them had already committed to other jobs, and so they were not at that point ready to turn back around. Not that I'm aware of.
From the public. From the public? Seeing none, your vote, please. And that passes eight, zero. Item C, resolution number 7071, entering into an agreement with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated regarding the design of 33rd Street and Lincoln Street improvements.
I move that resolution number 7,071 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Uh, as we discussed, for quite some time, looking to make improvements out of 33rd and Lincoln Streets, with the new elementary school being built out in that location. JEO is the one who did the traffic study for us, and so we look to have them do the design work on this particular project as well. The contract before you tonight's for 333, excuse me, $337,440. It includes design, utility coordination, bidding, some public improvement, or, excuse me, some public involvement, all those things are incorporated in this contract. What's not included, as very typical, is that construction oversight will be a separate contract at a later date. That's not uncommon in these types of projects. So idea is, hopefully, if you guys approve it, they get started here soon, get their survey crew out, and start seeing what utilities are in the area, and how they can make some improvements out there.
I'm sorry, I haven't been around, so I got a lot of questions.
It's okay.
Does this only go from the church to the cemetery, or are we talking 19th all the way to the cemetery?
This would go from basically the church, Christ Community Church there, to the intersection on Lincoln Street and 33rd, and then down 33rd Street to roughly the cemetery entrance.
Are we going to, when we do that, and I know I asked you this the other day, but I don't remember, are we going to try to do it from 19th on while we've got it all thorough, instead of tearing it up twice?
Uh, what we're looking at doing is taking Lincoln Street and going further to the west there, there's a section from 24th that does not have storms who are out there today, doesn't have curb and gutter, so we're looking to see if we can't have that designed in-house, and maybe add that on to the contractor, so you have one contractor here, be able to do all of it. We are looking to see if that's a possibility.
Is this 337,000 already included in the 4.3 million we've been discussing?
Yes.
Is it close to what you thought it was going to be?
Yes, it's actually lower than what they had initially in their original estimate they gave us.
Yeah, I noticed as I read through that, there's, there's some things that you pulled out that we're doing in-house.
A few things.
Yeah, that made it a little cheaper.
Yeah, if there's some things we can do internally, we'll, and some things, we just don't have enough manpower to get pushed through fast enough, so.
Yeah, I clicked through that, I went, okay, yep, 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 all right. Well, anyway, just a little pat on the back there for keeping the cash in pocket.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So I have like two questions. One, I just, it's, it's important to all of us, I know, it's important to me, but it's evidently really hard to change public involvement in a project once we let the bid. We can't go back and change it, or it's hard to do that. And if you read their scope of work under public involvement, there's a number of things that they've said they'll do as needed. I just want to make sure that we're contacting property owners, they know what the hell's going on, not just a public meeting that we advertise, and they don't get notice, and all of a sudden, we're doing stuff. So whatever that takes, T, I don't care, you can put it together, but let's make sure that every one of these property, and there's not that many we're talking about, I don't think, but everyone that we're, that's been involved with this, they get some kind of personal contact or letters and personal contact or something, so we don't have people complaining we didn't notify them of this after the fact. That's number one. Number two, the construction schedule, just one sec here, I'll find it. Construction phase anticipated 15-month duration following construction contractor notice, so it's after notice, and to proceed with all the utilities, construction anticipated to begin sometime in the summer of 2024 and end the fall of 2025. How does that relate with when the school's planning on being open?
And that's where we'll have to have coordination with the school. As we've indicated all along, we felt that design work will probably take about a year. You add a year to May of '23, you're all sudden May of '24, which is pretty close to the date they indicated there, and then 15 months for actual build-out.
Yep.
So yes, we may have to look at doing some phasing work here, so we've had some preliminary conversations with the school, but yes, we'll have to make sure we coordinate with them, so we don't, A, hold up their contractor, and B, we don't have everything torn up while they're trying to get parents and kids delivered to their new school.
And I know we'll do it, we'll start sooner than we started the last time, so we don't get between a rock and a hard place again, so you'll do a good job with that, I'm sure.
Okay, this, this one was an unusual situation, because we entered into the conversation with the school.
Late.
Early, well, we, we tried to enter into the conversation early. We even had one in August where we made it perfectly clear that design was going to be 12 or 15 months. There was a challenge for them to where they're going to put the building, and so that got pushed off until, well, December, and then another push-off, so it's unfortunate that delay was there, because we were fully aware that the design project was going to take some time.
Yep.
Unfortunately, this is where we're at.
Yep, it's water under the dam, but.
It is.
We can sure improve the dam this next time, that's for sure, so.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yep.
Any discussion from the public? We know your name, but I gotta have you state it anyway.
Aaron Shaw, and I just got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Uh, contracts this large, aren't you guys supposed to put it up for bid?
Says what?
As far as I know.
I didn't hear what you said.
Aren't large contracts like this required to be put up for bid, and you take the low?
When they're for professional services, they're not required to be bid.
If no one else offers them, correct?
No, it's just if they're professional services, they're not required to be bid.
Okay, that was just my question.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further discussion?
Bob?
Yeah.
Hang on, just a second.
Yeah.
I've, I've got, I've got an itch here, and I gotta have Toby scratch it.
All right.
Why was this not included, and the school paid for this, when they were figuring the entire deal? Nobody has ever gave me an answer. Why is the city having to take care of this road? That should have been included in the school's bids when they, when they got the school and everything else, and this, this, I've had a lot of people ask me, and I, I can't give them a measure because I don't know. Now, I'm not against the school or anything like that, but this should have been included. They dropped the ball, and here we go again. Big Brother City is going to take care of it, like we always do, but can you give me an answer why it wasn't included?
Uh, I, I can't answer those on behalf of the school. What I can tell you is, the agreement that we have worked out with the school, this was part of that $4.3 million estimate that Mr. Fraeland indicated earlier.
Understand that.
That is a caution between the city and the school moving forward. Since it is the city's road project, we'll be the ones that hire the engineer and oversee the project.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to vote for it, but it's, it's just, it's still galling.
Oh, Rich, I, I would also add that, you know, I would imagine in the future, there's going to be another building build-out there, and I certainly hope that they're smart enough to include it that time.
Why would they? We'll take care of it, we always do. We're the whole county's big brother. And you can put that in paper, I don't care.
I second that.
I told you you were going to regret me being back.
Oh, no. No, 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 but, you know, I, I will tell you, I, I don't think any of us were very excited about this.
I know we were.
And what it really came down to, what's the right thing to do for the kids? What's the right thing to do with safety?
And that's why I'm voting.
And what's the right thing to get it, yeah, and that, and the right thing to get it done.
It's what calls me.
Yeah, I, I don't think any of us are that excited about this project from a cost perspective. I think we're excited that at least on, in the future, we know we did the right thing, so. All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes eight, zero. Move on to ordinances. Ordinance amending the zoning map for the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, by changing the zoning of the property legally described as lots 21 through 23, inclusive Block 4, Highland Park, in addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, Gage County, partial ID number 012380000, commonly known as 1606 South 8th Street, or 8, commonly known as 1606 South 8th Court Street, to be part of Lot 4R, is that right?
No, I should, I should say 8th.
Okay.
Court on there.
All right, that's why, wait a minute here, okay. To be part of Lot 4R and B addition upon approval of the R and B additional, addition plat from GC Commercial District to R2 Single Family Residential District.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-14, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please, and that's eight, zero. Ordinance number 2314 by number only the first time, 2314 by the second time, and 2314 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 23-14 be passed and approved.
Second.
Okay.
This is the rezoning we had the hearing about earlier. Again, just kind of the odd part here is it gets rezoned, and then gets part of another plat coming through here shortly, so that's why it says soon to be part of Lot 4. Again, just so everybody can follow the breadcrumbs later.
Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Ordinance vacating lots 7 through 23, inclusive Block 4, lots 24 through 26, inclusive Block 4, lots 6 and 7, Block 3, and Lot 7 and 8, Block 7, all in Highland Park, in addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-15, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, so your vote, please, and that passes eight, Ordinance number 2315 by number only the first time, 2315 the second time, and 23-15 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 23-15 be passed and approved.
Second.
Uh, if you look at the map that we have pulled up there for you, everything in the red is what's getting vacated in this particular motion, so everything on the, that's labeled GC or R2 there on the left, that is by Mr. Messing, that's his ownership, and the R2 on the right, that would be Mr. Hakey's. And so those will be vacated, and then shortly, you'll see a new plat come through that includes different ways to configure those lots, and then includes some of the vacated streets and stuff that we have down in that area as well.
Any further discussion? Public? Seeing none, your vote, please. And that passes eight, zero. Okay, ordinance approving the plat of R and B addition.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-16, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Ordinance number 2316 by number only the first time, 2316 by the second time, and 23-16 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 23-16 be passed and approved.
Second.
Any further discussion needed?
Uh, really, the other thing is, you see the plat there, you'll see we, Mr. Messman put a couple of different lots on his particular parcel, that's the way he wanted those divided up, and then Mr. Hakey put all of his in the one parcel on the east side of the property there, so other than that, it's just been a really long, slow process to get here.
All right, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Okay, ordinance repealing section 2-67 of the Beatrice City Code regarding placing matters on the agenda.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-17, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. And that passes eight, zero. Ordinance number 20, 2317 by number only the first time, 2317 the second time, and 2317 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 23-17 be passed and approved.
Second.
Uh, just as a brief background, so 20, let's see, section 2-67 is what we professionally refer to as the Wayne bidding rule, which states that if councilmembers want something on the agenda, they need four of them to sign off, and then they can get an item on the agenda, this motion before you tonight, then we've repealed that from the city code.
Discussion?
Just reflecting back a couple weeks ago, didn't we state that the, so if I wanted to put something on the agenda, I needed three other council members to make four, but I have to contact more than four, three others, that puts us in violation of the Open Meetings Act?
Runs into some difficulties, yes.
Okay, I want to make sure that's clear.
Sure.
So if we vacate this ordinance 2-67, then how is stuff going to get put on to the agenda, besides our Thursday?
We'll develop some rules, or I'll, I'll basically develop something that says, here's what we look at to do it. And, you know, I, I think if you look at my past record, I haven't been afraid to take people ideas, I mean, I can't tell you that I've got 100%, that I'll give you 100%. I have a couple of non-negotiables, but on the other side of the coin, if it's reasonable and it's oversight or policy, I think it's something that should first go to discussion and then on to move forward. Ted?
So just a little background, so, and a little bit of clarification here, this, if councilperson goes to the mayor, and the mayor sets the agenda, so if a councilperson goes to the mayor and he's, and you request an item to be put on the work session or the council agenda, if he agrees to it, and you're a single, that's not a problem. It's when the mayor says, we're not going to talk about that, that's when the problem arises. And it, it hasn't been necessarily a problem with you, Mayor Morgan, but I would like to mention that this particular item, I asked you to put on the agenda in January, it's the 15th of May.
You did?
So we also have to get a mechanism to have our wants, our recommendations discussed in a timely manner as well. Having said that, I think that this will probably be voted out tonight. It just doesn't represent a way to run government. I, on many occasions in the past, I've had someone approach me and say, would you ask to have this on? And I had to say, contact the mayor, I can't, I've, I've done it. I, you know, you have to come to the council meeting yourself and, and ask them to put it on. So we also need to have some discussion moving forward about these things being put on in a timely manner as well. So with that, I, I hope all my fellow councilmen will support me tonight and repeal this ordinance. I think that's it for me.
Bob, I can't think of anything that I would ask to be put on the agenda that you wouldn't approve. I, I don't know what it would possibly be, and I'm not sure that the problem would be with you, but maybe down the road, we may not have a mayor that would be willing to do that, and I think that's the bigger issue, because I don't, I don't, I just don't know what I could put on here that you wouldn't let me do, so. But I think for the future, it wouldn't hurt.
Other people?
The only thing that this was put on for was, just to give you guys some history, you all know it.
That's what I was just about to ask.
Yes. We had a councilman years ago that would bring up Memorial Drive every council meeting, and we got sick of it, because it would go two, three, four hours. We wouldn't get out of there until 2 o'clock in the morning. And we finally went to the mayor, and I can't remember if it was John, or if it was, if it was.
John.
Paul.
It was John.
And says, we gotta do something about this. So this is what we did. That's the only reason that it was put in there, and it was just to stop the nonsense that was going on. And quite frankly, I've never had any problem with any mayor getting something on that I've wanted on, but that's what this was for. It, it's, it was just to take care of a problem that we had. that we had. And...
Just thought I'd give you guys a little history on that, that's what it was all about. Appreciate it.
You know, in a short term, certainly there'll be a number of things we have to work out, and certainly there's still going to be some things that are non-negotiable, and that's just part of the way it runs, but those non-negotiables are very, very thin, because like I said, you know, I think the track record, we've talked about U T Vs, we've talked about changing streets, quite honestly, I've been very upfront with Ted on these and told him when I was going to put them on the agenda, including the vote tonight. So, you know, I guess my, I feel good about the, being able to sit here and tell you that I am going to look at everything from an oversight point of view. Now, you know, if it's operations, that's something that, you know, our city administrator or our department heads can do, there's no reason for it to be on the agenda, just to make the agenda longer. And so, I think we have to be true to what we were voted in for, and that is for oversight. And one great thing that came out of it was the renovation of the waterfall. And so, I think there's, you know, I think that if, if anything, this group here, hopefully, all eight of us want to move the City of Beatrice forward, and that's why we ran. I think I can speak on behalf of myself and all eight of us, we're not doing it for the money. And we're doing it trying to move Beatrice forward for all twelve thousand five hundred people. And so, with that, other discussion?
Talk about a mechanism, Ted, do you remember, didn't we used to have a sign-up sheet in the clerk's office?
Well.
And we'd sign up on it and put our name, and then the, well, it wasn't mayor at the time, I think it was Ballard went through it first.
So, I wasn't, I didn't serve on the council when this ordinance was enacted. I've been, I've been on and off, and on, I've been on and off, and on and off, and on and off. But I, you were accurate why it was enacted, and, but yeah, in years past, in a little simpler time, before, before emails, and before you got your thing on a laptop, before you, you know, before you had to call everybody or things went in the snail mail, we simply went, if you had something that, but we had standing committees. So you would go to the clerk, and you would put your name on it, the item that you wanted discussed, and whether you wanted to discuss it properties, the property committee, management and budget committee, or at the full council. And then the mayor would look at that and say, okay, we're going to talk about it, but he would, he would contact you and say, if you didn't designate it, he would say, this is where I would like to discuss it, or if he disagreed with where you wanted to discuss it, he would say, well, we're going to talk about that, we'd like to talk about that committee and not the full council, and you, you and he would hash that out, but that was, in the past, but it was a little more simplistic then, that's, that's how it was done. But yeah, it was basically a legal pad that you put your name on in the item and where you wanted to have it discussed, so yeah, that was...
Trying to remember how we used to do it.
That was how they did it in the nineties, in the early nineties.
They'd ask when first, so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so.
More history than I know.
Had to go through Gwen, and Jim, and...
You know, Mr. Ray, you know how I feel about this, that I think if somebody from the public comes to me and would like to have something on the agenda, I don't see a problem that we spend five minutes discussing it. You know, that's not a lot of time, you've put a five-minute limit on things, which I agree with, so there isn't these hour and hour and type of thing, and then we can just either vote for it, or table it, or, you know, send it to the proper committee, but at least then, the public knows that we are doing it, that we're, you know, we're showing, yes, we're listening to you, we're, you know, bringing it forward to you, and things like this. I don't, I don't think, you know, we have a problem with, like you said, you've been very good, you know, and things like that, but I still feel that, that if the public comes to me and says, I want to see this, you know, done, can you put this on the agenda so we can talk about it? Five minutes is, you know, not that much time, you know, and even if there's four of them, I mean, twenty more minutes, our council meetings aren't that long, and I just feel that if we give the public the right, they know that they are being listened to, you know, I think that goes a long way. If we don't get back to them, or we say, nope, he won't, I couldn't get it through, the mayor didn't want it on the agenda, well, that, you know, that's not right, you know, you understand what I'm saying?
I do, but it goes back to that same question, is it oversight or operations? If it's something that somebody comes to you that, you know, a department head or a city administrator takes care of, it still has to be either a resolution or an ordinance, not just a one-person problem, because we represent more than one person, and we have to filter that ourselves, or if you need help filtering, we can help you filter that.
Like you said with the ordinance, just, I guess what I'm suggesting is at least some way that we can publicly acknowledge it, even to say, okay, we're going to send it to, you know, the different committee, or something like that, so they know at least that it's being, that we've listened to them and we're taking them seriously. I mean, that's, that's sort of my concern, that's, that's it.
Okay. I mean, we'll think of some other maybe possible ways to do that, that takes maybe up, you know, if each council person has five of those, and we do that times eight, you've spent a lot of time when we have to have other issues that we've got to get done as well, so I think we have to think that through a little bit.
As, and a lot of times when I have like a single-person issue, I filter, I first go to you or Tobias or Taylor, and they also would be the person that gathers up all this information, it's what you're talking about, so if it's more than one problem, I've never, you know, I'd like them to be able to do twice as much, but they've never told me no, and I always give them the information, so that's the mechanism that I've used since I've been on the council.
I kind of agree with Gary, that's kind of what I've done, Tobias and the department heads, they've always been very good about those one-person issues or more management-type things, and they've done a good job, and always get back to you, always follow up.
From the public, any discussion? Are we ready for vote? Your vote, please. And that passes eight zero. Moving on, ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city to Moonraker Mining One L L C.
I move that said ordinance could be given number twenty-three dash eighteen, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, whoops.
I'll second.
Sorry.
I'll second.
Got in a hurry.
That's right.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That passes eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-three eighteen by number only the first time, twenty-three eighteen the second time, and twenty-eighteen the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-three dash eighteen be passed and approved.
Second.
Discussion?
All right, so what's, before you tonight, is to sell Lot eleven, Gage County Industrial Park, first subdivision, this would be on the northeast corner of Industrial Row and Centennial Drive, is part of the lots that we acquired through the Zephyr transaction a couple of years ago, when we swapped them, and then they ended up moving out just north of where Precise Fab is at, that's how we got this lot. The sale price for you tonight's thirty thousand dollars, it's two-point-three-two acres, there is an M P P D utility easement over about point-four-three acres of the particular parcel there. This company we've been working with now for over a year on recruiting them to come to Beatrice. What they are, are digital mining company, and so that lot there has the fiber connections that they need, it has the electrical infrastructure already built out there that they need, and so if everything goes well, assuming this transaction's approved tonight, we'll continue forward, and we're looking to hopefully have somebody there by the end of the summer.
So, when this gets down to the resolution to sell this, I'm going to vote against it. I don't have a problem with it, I think, I understand what they do, they're going to buy a lot of electricity from us, it's good for us, but from everything I've read about this, not this specifically, because I don't know this specifically, but in everything that I've read about these, they're very, very loud. I think it's going to be problematic for their adjacent neighbors. We purchased, we're in the process of purchasing another tract that goes north, well north, and so my question is here, is are they in this big of a hurry, or could we have put them as far north in the property that we're purchasing, like that down over the hill there?
So, the ground you're talking about, if you went there, one, if you go to the far north end, there isn't other residents there that is north of that particular property, two, the electrical infrastructure's not there, and so their build-out would be significantly more than the build-out at this location, they generally look for industrial parks, and so it does meet our noise ordinances that we have in our zoning code.
I'm, I'm well aware, I...
But yes, noise is something we have talked to them about since the beginning, to make sure it was dampened and those types of things, and so they've got some different products that they can use.
Okay, and they're, I haven't been involved in conversations, but they are, when, when we start to get complaints about this, Nebraska is a very humid place, sound travels more on, on wet air, that's, so those of you that can hear the train whistles in the fall and the spring more than you can in the summer and the winter, that's why. My concern is that once this is there, we can't do anything about it. So, like I said, still going to vote against it, not against it, but I'm going to vote against it, because I think it's a problem later on, but my concern is, and like I said, I wasn't involved in conversations, but I, I hope they are the type of people that we can go to them and say, look, we've got some complaints, we need, you need to add something, or they can, or they're the type, my question is, is are they the type of people that say, hey, we bought it, we're going to do what we want? That'd be my concern, so. Like I said, it's going to pass, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm going to vote against it, because I think it's too loud for the location.
I was going to ask about that, oh, because I'll give it up, I was going to ask about that too, T, before we got too much further with it, but I've also read where everything almost to a hundred percent of the noise can be drowned out nowadays with different stuff. I mean, there's a whole bunch of companies that go drowned out fifty to seventy-five percent of it, and from what I've read, there's at least three companies nationwide that can drown, they say, right at a hundred percent of the sound, I just don't know anything about this company, or if they have a capability of being able to do that or not, but that was going to be a question of mine also tonight.
Sure, so the first question is, what does the noise come from? The noise comes from fans. This is essentially a container with a bunch of computers in it that run, and they cool it by turning on some fans and then drawing the air in, that's what the noise comes from. Yes, there are a number of different products in the market that they can use to dampen the noise, from everything I've had these conversations, these individuals, they've looked at different options, and they will look to employ something, I don't know exactly what that mechanism will be, I don't know if they've reached that decision, but yes, they are aware of the noise, and they will work to dampen it.
Will they be bringing, there's like, what, ten, fifteen jobs somewhere in there?
No.
No.
No, there are probably no jobs to start with.
No jobs to...
No. Once they get large enough, then they'll start having some techs, but to start with, no.
Okay.
But power use is high.
The power use is very high, yes.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, I mean, they're going to use our energy, and so we will be able to sell them a lot of energy. I might ask you probably how much, I, my terms are a lot.
Is that going to affect, say, in the summertime when the air conditioner uses, is that going to affect our, our grid?
No. If you remember, so back in the old days, everybody remembers you had to conserve energy, that was largely because the price signals you received from M P P D, they charged you more for energy at those peak times, we are no longer part of that system, and so our price of energy is the same day or night, and so we don't have those same price signals, so you don't have to worry about having curtailment during the summer months. This particular industry that's coming in, we have excess energy able to sell to them, we're working on finalizing the price currently as we speak, some of that has to do with where they locate, because where they locate depends on how much build-out is, and how much the build-out is, and it impacts the price, and so we're trying to work through those stair steps till we get there.
Okay, if my air conditioner doesn't run this summer, I'm sick and Becky on you.
I think the bottom line is that we've been talking about this, I think since I've been on, and Tobias has done a lot of the legwork, we've got a lot of information, and our electric department, I think, is going to be making some pretty good money, and that is one good way we make money, is because our energy costs are so reasonable, so as long as they can pay the bill, I...
Pay for them streets we're putting in.
There you go, that's a good answer.
Any discussion from the public? All right. If not, gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes seven one. Resolution number seven zero seven two entered into a contract for sale to Real Estate with Moonraker Mining One L L C.
I move that resolution number seven thousand seventy-two be passed and adopted.
Second.
This is simply the resolution that authorizes signing the contract that we just discussed.
Any further discussion needed? All right. Gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes seven one. All right. That brings us to the public forum. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone here for the public forum? Come on up. And then state your name and address, and we'll rock and roll.
I am Shalina McGuire, and I live at seven twenty-two North Seventh.
Thank you.
I just, I don't know if this is the time or place, but I came up here to tell you that I'm not just the waterfall lady. I've been working as a public dispatcher for over twenty years for the City of Beatrice, and I just want to tell you that they've added a lot of area on in the last few years, and I haven't really been appreciated, but I feel appreciated now, and I, I just want to tell you from the bottom of my heart, I'm so, so glad that you gave us the raise that you did.
Well deserved.
We really did it, so.
We did it just for you, that was it.
It was just for me.
The rest of the people have to thank you.
No, all of us, just all of us. I would never not do the job that we do, the way we do it, but it's nice to be appreciated.
We're glad to do it for you.
I would, I would say the beginning of this meeting was very well justified of why we did that, what we seen with everybody who was recognized this evening, and we're proud of everybody that we have that works for the City of Beatrice.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Except Taylor.
I like Taylor.
Been here three months, it takes a vacation.
All right. We'll move on to discussion reports. Aaron, city clerk overview.
All right, I'm trying to make this very short and sweet, because I don't really like to talk in front of people, but I'm going to do it.
And yet you're an award winner.
What?
And yet you're an award winner.
I know, right? That was, you should have heard my speech, it wasn't great.
You didn't bring a plaque with you?
I should have, it's on my wall, it's finally hanging up.
You should have put it on the table next to you when you got up to speak, it would have been.
I should have.
Yeah.
Okay, so, obviously, I'm Erin Sadoff, I'm the city clerk. I've been with the city for twenty-three years, was hired as a utility billing clerk in January of two thousand, then in June of two thousand nine, I was promoted to administrative assistant, served for the city administrator, city attorney, city engineer, and the then BPW office manager, and then in April of two thousand fifteen, was promoted to the city clerk and H R, when we had the BPW office manager retire and did some restructuring of the city. Some of my achievements, achievements since taking over the city clerk H R role is I did get my certified municipal clerk certification in May of two thousand eighteen, I am working towards my master's municipal certification, that will probably take an additional, I probably have five more years at least, it takes about eleven years from when you get your C M C, with all the training and the different, the time and the experience, it equates to about a ten-year after your C M C, so I'm working on it, getting closer, and then as Ted mentioned, I was named the outstanding clerk of the year for the Nebraska Municipal Clerk Associations in the first-class city department, what department, what do I want to say?
Division.
Division, there you go, I know it started with a D, this past March, so that was a very nice surprise. Some of my responsibilities is, probably the main one is to keep this, all of the city's official records, whether that be the minutes of the council meetings, the resolutions that we pass, the, all of the ordinances, our contracts, various agreements that we have, also issue liquor licenses, tobacco licenses, I also am in charge of publishing the, all legal notices, legal notices for the public, for their meetings, any public hearings that we're having. I also do prepare and distribute... I also do prepare and distribute the agendas, agenda packets and minutes for the city council meeting, as well as a number of our other boards and commissions. Maintain and codify the Beatrice City Code. So the code that was repealed tonight, tomorrow morning, I'll send it off to MuniCode, which is with Civic Plus now, and they will update our city code. So we keep up to date on that. I also administer the oath of office for elected officials, all of our department heads, any, actually any public employee. There's a state statute that says if you're paid with public funds, you should be required to take an oath of office. So I do that for all of our employees. I oversee the bid opening and requests for proposals. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a little bit. I also serve as the HR director for the city employees. I'll get into that a little bit also. And then the civil service secretary as well. The boards and commissions, as I said, all of our boards and commissions kind of help prepare and finalize agendas and the minutes and record keeping for them. The only ones I really don't do a lot of, I do assist, is with the library advisory board and the airport advisory board. So all the rest of them, I kind of have a little hand in those. As far as meeting preparation, as I said before, I do publish the legal notice and then update our city website calendar. And then I work with the city administrator, attorney, and mayor if I have items that are asked for me sometimes. Work with Tobias and Taylor on getting all of the supporting documents together so I can get them all to you in your agenda packets so you can review them before we meet on Then I, like I said, upload them into Spark. I do have to post the agenda 24 hours prior to the meeting. And I also send that, the agenda to our news media, the Daily Sun and KWB News Channel in Nebraska. I also send it to the library and that is posted there at the library as well. Then kind of prepare the worksheets that you have and print off the resolutions, ordinances, give them their numbers. Yeah, so that's about them. Pre-meeting, after the meeting, the agenda packet gets published on our city website as well as our approved minutes. The minutes and ordinances that are approved get sent to the Daily Sun to be published in the paper. Since we took over our new city website, I also have the capability, we put all the resolutions and ordinances on there, so a little more transparency for our citizens. Then if anyone, whoever needs copies of the ordinances, resolutions, we send those out. And then we kind of just start all over on the next week. So the bidding process, work with James and the department heads quite often. The most recent one at the 13th Street, James puts together the contract and the bidding documents. He'll have me go through it, put it all together in the contract. Then we post that on our city website as well as Quest CDN. We'll establish what day we're going to open those. We try to coordinate those when a council meeting or a board of public works meeting is close so we can time those efficiently to take them to the board if needed and then to our council the following. After that, like I said, make sure we put it on the city council agenda. After the meetings, then I do finalize the contract documents and send out the final contract to the awarded contractor. And we get put in together one complete contract for that document. The HR duties, a little bit, I post all of our openings on the city website for our full and part-time positions. I also let the Department of Labor know our, when we have openings. We've tried Indeed, not Indeed, yes, Indeed.
Tried Indeed.
Indeed. I can't think of what the other one was.
LinkedIn.
LinkedIn. We have, yes, Amanda's done that. She's kind of taken over the LinkedIn part. Indeed's kind of a hit or miss. We haven't really had a lot of luck with that one. So my part of the hiring process, I collect all the applications and tell the date, the cutoff date, and then those are forwarded to the department head so that they can review them and set up the interviews. And then I do sit in all, all of the interviews with the department head present for all of the part-time employees. I don't, a lot of times do the part-time or seasonal. Then I do notify all of the candidates who are not selected. We send out a letter to them, letting them know that they weren't selected. We'll retain their applications for future openings. We usually hold them at least six months. I probably have way longer than six months of applications, but, and then for the candidate that is selected, I will send out all of the hiring documents, including their benefit enrollment, so they can complete that before they report to duty. The city has, I also keep track of all of the employee records. We have about 150-ish full-time employees, about 30 part-time employees. And then between April and October, we have about 55 seasonal employees. Each year, those seasonal employees are required to reapply and that means a lot of paperwork, but we want to make sure that they are getting paid how they need to get paid and that their money is going into the correct account. I'm sure they appreciate that. For new employees, I do have to e-verify them to make sure that they're legal to work here and for the city. And again, I did mention that we, I administer the oath of office. I also oversee the health insurance for all of employee, all of our employees, which is for the full-time employees. Make any employee changes throughout the year for qualifying events, if they get married, if they have a child, divorce. And then open enrollment, we hold annually, the early of November. Our calendar year is January to December, so gives them a chance to make any changes for the upcoming year. I also oversee the FMLA paperwork, our work comp claims, and then we also have a wellness program that I kind of oversee. The civil service secretary duties that I have, that is for our police and fire department. Post all of the openings that are submitted to the, from the department head to Tobias for approval. Say someone leaves, we need a new position open. After the applications are accepted, I administer the written test to the candidates. I go through usually IPMHR, I believe, for, they have civil service testing for whatever group of individuals that we are hiring for. I also, and those would be for entry level and if we have any promotions coming up, sergeants or captain for police, or, sorry, for fire. I also oversee the interview process with the civil service commission board. And with the civil service commission, we hold, usually it's the top 10 applicants if we're lucky enough to have that many. Lately, we haven't really had the numbers that we've had in the past, but they can certify up to three names per opening that we have and those names are good for 12 months. So if we go through the process and we fill the one vacancy that we had, if, if within the 12 months that we, 12 months that we've certified them and we have another opening, we can go and use the other remaining names so we don't have to go through the whole process again. I also, for the police, in order to get into the academy, they are required to take a TAB test, which stands for Test of Adult Basic Education. Actually, I'm doing one of those on Wednesday. So it's reading and language to make sure they can read and comprehend. So some of the things that I have over the years implemented, the paperless agenda packets. Tonight's agenda packet was, I think, 289 pages. We used to make like 13 copies of that. I now make two. I make my official record and the public copy. So that has saved tremendously on paper and time. That would have probably tied up most of the day for the copier in our office. So created a handbook for the newly elected officials and new employees that gives us an overview of the city. Kind of basically, I'm taking all of the information that the department heads have given here and combine it kind of a smaller overview for new employees because they may not realize that we have 14 departments and they just think they're the one little department and don't realize that we're all one big family. So, let's see. I kind of mentioned, I co-chaired with Amanda Coleman when we took over, or when we implemented our new website, like I said, to be more transparent, allowing all the ordinances, resolution minutes, packets, all that to be put on there. And I am also currently in the process of updating our site, the city's filing system, electronic and hard copy. Our downstairs is kind of a mess. We've kind of got like three different filing systems. So unless you know where to look, you might not know where to look for something on a pig or whatever, you know, you're going to have to look three different places before you're going to maybe find what you're looking for. So I'm trying to combine those all into one, as well as updating our electronic filing system so that it's easier for us to search and for all future employees to be able to search on the records and get our employees and citizens what they are asking for. And then some of my outside involvement, I did do the, I completed the Leadership Beatrice Program in 2014. I sit on the holiday lighted parade committee since 2015. And I've been a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and Nebraska Municipal Clerk Association for the past eight years, as well as our local chapter of the Southeast Area Clerks Association since 2015. I'm the current president for our association. And I'm also a member of the Society for Human Resource Management and the local chapter of Lincoln Humane, Lincoln Human Resource Management Association, trying to kind of dive more into the HR part of it. Discovered a few years ago that there was actually an HR organization, so kind of trying to learn and get more experience in that. So that's kind of what I do in a nutshell. So, any questions?
Hey, you have one?
Okay.
What do you do with all your spare time?
Well, I go to kids' events and, yeah, I don't know.
Mayor, I probably have at least as much appreciation for your job as anybody here since I was one at one time. I think the word city clerk kind of brings a vision into your mind of some little man or woman sitting in a corner in the dark with some little brimmed hat on or something. But obviously, it's, it's one of the few official positions in the city and it makes it very important. You should be congratulated on being certified. They didn't give that away a long time ago. I bet it's one hell of a lot harder now. I just want you to know, we're all really proud of what you've done and the position you have with us.
Thank you.
Well, I think she made a case for a raise, didn't she?
Thank you, and thank you for all you do.
Thanks, Aaron.
And occasionally I get an email reminder, which is probably good because sometimes I forget. Okay. City administrators, monthly report.
Yeah, just a couple of things to highlight that's in the report and then they open after any questions anybody might have. The Gage County Trail Depot, we talked about that particular project for quite a while. It's down there, it's the trailhead that's just north of Dempsters. We have acquired the McAllister property that is just to the west of that particular trailhead. We're out for bids currently for what I would call a sponge park. Those bids are due back June 1st. And so hopefully then we'll be able to bring a contract to you relatively soon to get somebody on board for that one. But we did complete that McAllister transaction. That's been, again, a process that's been out there for a little while. The Court Street Corridor, the next open house is a week from tonight, May 22nd, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the city auditorium. So J O came down last time, they got some input from, or excuse me, Olson's was down last time, got some input from everybody, took those back. Now they're working on putting together some proposals and some ideas of things that can be done for the particular corridor. And so we'll look to unveil those a week from tonight, again, Monday, 22nd, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the city auditorium. And then finally, the splash pad in the water park open on May 27th. So, you know, you're getting time for summertime.
I get two questions. First of all, the, the deal on 22nd about the bypass. So where does it go from there?
22nd Street bypass.
No, no.
On the 22nd.
All on the 22nd. Okay, there we go. So the next thing is Olson's will go back, they'll take the input we have there, they'll go back and finalize their report. And then I think they bring it here, but anyhow, the report only being coming back to this body, I don't know for sure if Olson's will make a formal presentation or not, I have to look, but they'll come back to this body for approval or shelving or however you get, yeah, whatever you guys want to do with it.
So what's the timeframe on that? Do you know?
I believe they'll hope to get finished up in July.
Yeah. That's what their last, at the last meeting, they said, the master plan, file, approve, discuss and approve, maybe the final master plan would be done sometime in July.
Okay. So, and through the, so the other question I have, it's in the engineering part, engineers' portion of this. I didn't bring it up here, but it's the first thing in the engineering report, the tributary 44 deal. Has that been shelved? Are we working on that? Where are we at?
So we about, oh heck, it's been several months ago, if not a year ago now. We were told by the state, they're hoping to get an application in. They had some money available to do some additional studies. We got our stuff submitted and we haven't heard anything from, since then on our particular grant application to study both that one and the drainage area through Belvedere.
Is there, is there a little magical amp we can rub to find out where that's at?
We keep pushing on them.
I've followed up a couple of times now and the answers always come back pretty ambiguous. I haven't gotten a solid answer or an estimated timeline yet, but I can follow up tomorrow again for you.
Please do. A squeaky wheel gets the grease sometimes. And I, it's this, it's this time of the year, you know, it's May and June and we, of course, you never know now with climate change when those big rains come, but this is going to be a problem. And, you know, we've been two years in, so we haven't fixed the problem, although we did start to clean out some of the dishes, so thank you. So, all right, that's all I have.
Next item is really pretty quick. One of the things that's not spelled out by how meetings go is the open sessions. I have noticed that a number of us get here early. I know that this would impact maybe Tim and Mike a little bit. I wondered if instead of setting up the fourth Wednesday or Monday when we have a work session, that we would have the opportunity to do a work session either from 6:00 to 7:00 prior to the first or the third meeting to maximize our time and our efficiency.
Problem that I've got with that is, I don't have any problem with having another meeting. Want to add the meeting? That's fine. My problem is that you block it to an hour. You can only discuss something for an hour and some things take longer. So if you want to add another, you want to add another work session, I got no problem with that. But my problem would be that the hour's up, not everything's been discussed or, or conversation's limited because you only have an hour, so.
There would be nothing that would require you to stop at an hour.
Well, it would be if the meeting starts.
You can't start the city council meeting before 7:00. You can always start it late.
Right.
I have no problem with that.
I just, I just thought it was just kind of a, a way to really take care of our efficiency and even the publics if they wanted to attend. So we're looking at two nights because we're here anyway. So.
That's, that's fine.
You guys, you guys have any heartburn?
I don't have a job.
I'm retired.
That just means I'll be here at 6:15.
So, okay. Well, I'll work on that. So I think if we want to give that a trial run, I think we'll do that through the summer and we'll see where we end up.
So our next work session is?
To be determined.
I see.
Probably be the first, first meeting in June with Memorial Day weekend. I think we probably will bypass having a work session on the 22nd. I would encourage everybody instead to go to the meeting at the city auditorium from 4:00 to 6:00 if they can make it to put your input on the study.
So your June meeting's the 5th or the 6th?
5th.
5th.
Okay. Okay.
I move the Beatrice City Council going to closed session at 8:29 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
Call for vote.
Your vote, please. Passes 8-0. Thanks.